This morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, where we are held for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any citizens with us today that have any particular thing that they'd like to bring up for future discussion or comment they'd like to make this morning before we get started? If not, we'll move on to our agenda and the approval of the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda? Any changes that, or anything any of the commissioners wanted to? Yes, Stephanie?
The one item is you do have a correction to the February where, excuse me, February 25th minutes, and that will take separate action. So you might want to pull that out of the consent and list it as your first item of routine business.
Okay. The correction, we'll approve the previous minutes but move the correction down to the regular business, correct? Okay. We'll take that first under routine business. If not, any other corrections or additions, without objection, we'll approve the consent agenda. Then we'll move on to our regular business, which would be item number one that we just moved down, which is the correction of the February 25th minutes. And the chair would entertain a motion for such.
Move.
Moved by Krogman.
Second.
Second by Falcon. Discussion. Everybody understands what we're doing? Okay. Please call a roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Then item number A is approval of claims. Chair would entertain a motion for discussion.
So move.
Moved by Wyeth, second by Miller. Okay, discussion. Comments on the claims. Commissioner Wyeth.
Let's see, where did, maybe, there was a corner built from Sanford. And I thought we had a corner. Do we go from place to place, or how do we do that?
That was an autopsy, wasn't it Marty?
Autopsy.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments regarding the claims? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Our department head reports. Marty, we'll let you go first today. I don't think we've let you be the first one out lately, have we? Okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
I don't have a lot this morning. We have nineteen in jail.
Is your mic on, Marty?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that one's always on, okay.
We have nineteen in jail, and I think there's twenty-four on, twenty-four seven. Came back from the sheriff's conference in Deadwood, and we ran into like five miles out. We ran into snow covered and had to go about five miles an hour, and there was a skidster in the hotel parking lot making room so we could park. So anyway, so that was a fun trip. There was about a hundred and fifty of us there between the sheriffs and the police chiefs, so it was really a good conference. And I'm going to bring back a lot of good stuff for my department that I'm going to initiate with risk assessments and different types of things. So it was, it was a, well, I'm glad I went because it was a good conference. The Outdoor Adventure Center, their board that does the pistol target came in and dismantled everything that was left in the basement for the shooting range, and I think it's all gone. The steel plates may be in there because they had to cut them in half because they can't get them out the door and stuff, so they may still be there. But otherwise, and going to look at, you know, doing some things. Now that that's out of there, it's kind of drabby down there, so I may paint the walls white or something to kind of make it look more homey down there for the exercise area. Also, you put, you allowed me to, you put money in the budget for the building fund for the, to asphalt across the street. I had it reestimated because now I'm going to put in a little, a little green space area next to the sidewalk, come back off about six foot. So that came, that bill came in a little, it was ten thousand to asphalt, now it's eight something. And then, then this way I'll be able to kind of do a little green space in there too, so make it look nice over there. So I think I'll go ahead with that since the money's there and so forth. The other thing is, is that the computer software, new records management's going well, and it's, thank you for that, allowing us to do that. It's, it's going to save us a lot, yeah, a lot of time, and everybody likes, likes doing it and so forth. And I think we're a little speedier. Stephanie helped us out getting our, checking with our local telephone office and got us some, got us some speed, met with the city manager and so forth, and the police chief. And the police chief wanted to compliment Stephanie for the help that she did with that, you know, when we were out at the conference. So I just want to pass that on for helping us out. So now we're a lot speedier than we were, so my guys are happy. So, other than that, I really don't have anything else.
That new system should work pretty good, hopefully.
Absolutely, yeah. And what's nice is Zerker is in so many other communities, and this connects South Dakota where we can, you know, other cities and counties, we can all kind of connect together and pass on information, and there's just, and then with the state's attorney being on board, and I think it's just going to be, just, just a great system.
Abby, how does it work for you? It's new, of course.
It's new. I mean, like everything, it just takes some time to adjust and get all the kinks worked out. You know, I think my staff has worked really well with Marty's staff and the P D's staff, just making sure everybody's on the same page. It certainly is very efficient. You have access to the information very quickly, which, you know, maybe there's just before the delay in physically walking reports back and forth. But still some things from our end we got to work out, but overall, you know, it's working great.
Okay. Commissioners, Marty?
Bart Siewie, my jail administrator, he was the project manager for my department, did a very good job with, with helping. And of course with Stephanie and Jason, they all got on board with the lack of our IT guy. So we couldn't have did it with all these, without all these people, so, so I appreciate all the help we got.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, so you didn't, you don't feel like there are any major bugs that need to be worked out at this point?
Not at this point, no. It's just, sometimes we're used to our old system, and so we had to do things a little different where now we don't have to put as much information in. Sometimes we still are overloading it by putting too much information, and we don't have to do that. It's, you know, so it's just learning those types of things. The new deputy I have, Mike Gengler, that came from Watertown Police Department, they had already switched to Zerker, so he's helping my deputies, you know, learn the system. Trouble is, he had to learn justice for about two weeks, and then we switched over with Zerker, but.
Marty, did they get the interface going with the accident records and things like that?
Yes, yes.
So you, when you do an accident and go automatically, but you had to manually enter that before, right?
Right, yeah.
So they got that going?
Yeah, yeah. And I've ordered mobile laptops, and they'll be coming, and Zerker promises to come back and get us going on that, so.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thanks, Marty.
Okay.
Glad to hear it's working good.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Last night we had storm spotter training. We had sixty-three people attend it, and we need to thank the radio station, they put it on there, it was on, on the radio several times, and it was on their news Facebook page, and the newspaper for writing an article on it on Saturday. We appreciate all the help we can get on that. Todd Highcamp from the National Weather Service, he did an excellent job as, as always. Next up, we have a full-scale exercise next, I want to say Thursday, May fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, had to be a full-scale exercise over at the Emergency Operations Center. We got the results back from our inspection by the Insurance Services Office Incorporated, the I S O. And I talked to Spence Holly this morning, an in, local insurance agent, and we've got some issues with that particular, with the building code situation, which we've been discussing with the county commission in the past. So we're going to reply back to the I S O with our future plans, such as updating our ordinances and stuff like that, and try to keep our rating what it is right now. Because it was, it was explained to me if our rating raises, that it causes a big increase in insurance throughout the community, so.
So are you having to update the code?
Yes.
Because I know we're behind on the code.
Yes, ma'am.
As, and ordinances?
Well, the ordinance and the code goes together. What we're going to do with the, with the actual ordinance itself is, instead of putting a date in our ordinance, we're just going to say the latest and current.
Code?
From now on.
Okay.
And then that would cover us on the ordinance side, but we're actually using the two thousand and six international building code right now.
Right.
The state's even moved up to nine or twelve, I believe.
Okay.
So we're going to actively work on that, and we've got to reply back to them, and we'll keep the board informed of the status on that. Because if that number does change, it is a burden on everyone. We have a zoning board member that's going to be taking a leave of absence later on this year due to a work commitment, and after discussion, discussing the matter with the deputy state's attorney, I'm going to request that we put this matter on a future county commission agenda for discussion and possible action. And what we need to look at is some procedure to probably have an alternate assigned to the zoning board, either as a county commissioner or a separate person that could be brought in. The city does that on, I believe their Board of Adjustment, and there's a couple other things. So that's going to be on a future agenda, just to let you know. Wednesday, I, well tomorrow, there's a region six meeting tomorrow afternoon, and tomorrow morning I'll be in Sioux Falls for a medical appointment, so I'll be driving my vehicle, my personal vehicle to both of those. This Thursday, we got a P P C C meeting. That actually starts at ten, it goes from ten a.m. to two p.m. because myself and Chief Hartman from the Fire Department is going to be training I C S as it relates to P P C C and the pod. Because there's a big miscommunication, I refill, you got the pod and they're basically standalone, and then anytime you pull a pod or a P P C C operation, pandemic operation, we're going to have other operations going on in the community also. And Thursday, we also got a fire chief meeting, and our Homeland Security Conference is coming up. I had a travel request in my packet this morning, or in your packet this morning, and Commissioner Falcon brought up that, well, we're going to have six people from Brookings County go, so I may go ahead and just register all six if they haven't registered yet and make the claims through, the claims has to come through my office anyway, and then we'll be reimbursed, and we'll be paying everyone else that goes to that. And last but not least, I did forget to mention, during our storm spotter training last night, we had county employees from the Highway Department, and the sheriff, had a deputy sheriff and some of the R S V P members did show up along with the radio club, had a strong attendance. Any questions?
Tom?
We have our nine eleven meeting tomorrow, right, eight thirty?
Um. I believe so, but I won't be able to be there.
Okay. And then tonight we have my first, I don't know how many you had, joint city-county zoning meeting.
Yes.
At six thirty, followed by the board will be going.
At eight.
The comprehensive plan, right? And then at eight o'clock, we'll have our regular meeting, so.
And the issue tonight, the main issue tonight, not to, not to overstep here, but the main issue tonight is, they're going to rezone the trailer park that we had some major issues with, that has been, been sold. And then part of that was R three A, and part of it was agricultural, and then other parts was B for business. So they're going to come in and make, make the whole, take it out of the ag part, make it R three in the rear, and then they're going to do some modification to the business up along the road. Is the request for the joint meeting. After that, we, we have a PowerPoint presentation by Ms. Thoreau that she showed to the county township meeting. We're going to show that to the zoning board as part of the comprehensive plan update, and then we'll have our regular zoning meeting after that. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, discussion for Bob?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Burke, our highway superintendent. Morning, Dick.
First, Toby Zimmerman finally sold his place out in the country, so he is resigning from his heavy equipment position, and his last day will be May sixteenth. And so that will be coming up in a couple weeks. The South Dakota D O T asked me when I contacted them last week after our strategic planning meeting, if the board would be so kind as to put it in their minutes, their preference for funding the difference of the Highway seventy-seven project. And I had told them that my understanding was, we don't want to borrow, we would rather pay the difference out of reserves, and so if you could just, kind of, I don't know if you'd put it as a discussion or as a general consensus, and then I'll just forward that off to the D O T, and is that all right with you, Stephanie, or? I mean, all they want is a comment, I, obviously, they want, you know, I told them, but they said, well, maybe just put it in the minutes to be sure.
Refresh me on the seventy-seven.
That's the, that's the overlay project.
Yeah.
We're going to be about eight hundred thousand dollars short on, that'll take place next summer.
Yeah.
And that was the one where they'll mill an overlay and then also do that box.
Okay.
So.
I, I think maybe proper, we should probably just put it on the agenda for discussion and have it in our minutes that we discussed it.
Okay.
I was thinking that too, just because you'd be committing county funds, I think you should probably take action and have that listed on an agenda.
Yeah, with us committing, with us committing financial support, would it have to be an official action?
All right.
So, yeah, just get it on the agenda and we can.
Okay, will do. And then the weather spotter training last night was very interesting. The building project has started, and we took some of the filled dirt that was removed and put it on long shoulders to make them a little safer on Highway twelve, instead of just disposing of it. The box culvert on Highway nine has started, they've removed the old structure, and should have it about ready to start setting the new one either by the end of the week, if, if not, maybe by tomorrow. We're in the last week of crack filling, started patching the culvert projects, and that'll take a couple weeks for that, pulling shoulder and gravel roads, and then I got the signatures for the right-of-way easements for the bridge project north of the gun club, and that'll be coming up on the next meeting's agenda too, so, just for the heads up. That's it. Unless you have any questions?
Question, Denny?
Dick, I just had a question, and Bob, and I, I've just noticed, because I travel the road quite often, is, is out there, as you're going the Country Club Road there area, you know, that water has really changed its path, and we've talked about that before. Do you perceive that in a major rain, that that's really going to cause us some problems with that road? Because it's kind of taken it out of the channel, Bob, we talked about that, or there was something done years and years ago. And I don't remember where we left that or what our discussion was of if, because there was some studying done, to be done on that too, right, Bob? You know, talk about, Dick.
Yeah, diversion.
A diversion, because it's actually not, it's taking it out of the Sioux River and sending it two different directions.
Mm-hmm.
And you, you notice that land is awful wet out there, and every year it just seems like it gets wetter and wetter, and more water sits before the river.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something we should?
I really don't think there's anything we can do. It's going to be the big Sioux River changing channel, which is a natural, I mean, it was, it was man-made probably fifty, sixty years ago when, when the berm was, was broken. But we've had the, the natural, N R C S came out, and I believe the Corps of Engineers both came out, and basically there's nothing.
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking of maybe we have, we're going to have to do something for more culverts, more way to get that water out of there down the road because of it going out of the channel and diverting, and just something to be thinking about, because I think if we get a major five, six inch rain, we're going to have a lot of flooding out there over the roads and stuff.
Something to keep an eye on.
Yeah.
Stephanie, did you?
Thirty-fourth is really, really, really soft at the south end, Thirty-fourth Avenue.
Right, yeah, and we've, we've been pulling ditches and trying to get a little more material and.
I see that it's been worked, but it's, it's a bit of a hazard in a car.
Well, and another thing, it, not only this time of the year, it's probably the worst of the worst, but with that road, I guess, I, I'm not sure how much to invest in it if they're still going to try to get something done. In other words, haul in more gravel would probably be the best immediate aid to that road. However, how much do you put into a dead horse?
Typically, how long does it take for those to firm up?
Well, it'll take probably a good warm rain to kind of iron it in, and then some traffic, non-invasive traffic to kind of.
That's the trouble, the trucks are doing it.
Yeah, and it's kind of pumping the mud up through.
Yeah.
And that's why we tried to pull the shoulders in and get more crown to get better drainage, but it just needs more strength. It needs, it needs a good solid base, so.
Well, I just, I was concerned because I just, a car that didn't know that was there.
Mm-hmm.
It's got pretty good grooves in it, and I think that they would bottom out.
Right, and I, I think they're out there again this morning trying to.
Okay.
Feather it a little bit.
Good.
Okay. Tom, you have a question? Okay, Ron? Well, thanks, Dick.
All right.
Appreciate it. And we have no other department heads at the present time, so we'll go on to our regular business. Item number A under regular business is discussion and possible action on a request for a polling location at S D S U. Imagine you're here to address this a little bit. Please tell us who you are, and then you can bring up your point of discussion, and then we'll visit with our staff too.
Okay, my name's Cortland McCrany. I'm the current student body vice president on campus. I believe my, our state and local chair, Olivia Siglin, has been in contact with you. She hasn't been, she was not able to attend this meeting. She's at her job and working crop insurance already for the summer. So I was in town, so I volunteered to come here and talk to you guys all about it. And I feel our request is pretty simple. We're, all we're asking is for a polling location on campus or near campus. Our feeling, one of our jobs as student representatives is trying to ensure that the students of S D S U are represented as best as they are, so we can make sure their voices are heard. We feel that providing them with a convenient location to vote is a pretty simple way to do this. We also have several thousand faculty who I also think would benefit from having a polling location more conveniently located towards their workspace. I'm happy to answer any questions for you or get a discussion going. I'm not sure what other information is really needed or what the process looks like.
Okay, thanks for coming, and what I'm going to do, Stacy, if it's appropriate, you've given us some information. I don't know if you've got the information that our finance office.
I've received some of it, not all of it.
Okay, you want to bring up your comments that you had and, and then we'll.
I provided you a staff report. Like I said, I'm not against a location near S D S U. I don't want anything in the center of campus. I would be against anything that the average person could not access easily. And as you know, S D S U has turned itself into a walking campus, which is fantastic, but that means that the average person in Brookings doesn't have, it's a challenge to get anywhere on campus these days, if, especially if you don't have a parking permit, if you don't work there, it's, it's a challenge. You know, if we could find something near the edge of campus, I'm not against looking at something there. Right now I have my facilities free of charge, so that's something that I would be looking at. Obviously handicap accessibility. I need a location that can be guaranteed to me as well from election to election, and not only me, but I work very closely with the city of Brookings and the Brookings School District as well, to make sure that we are all using the same polling locations from election to election. It gets very confusing for voters to have different locations for different types of elections. So we need to get them agreeable to a location as well. I don't want to have a place, they say I can have it, and then another event comes in, and that's the only time that they can come, and I get bumped, and then I'm stuck looking for another place to find as we, near an election day as well. I guess those are just kind of the highlights of my, my concerns with finding a location near campus. Like I said, I'm not against it if we can find something. It has to be a fairly large location. As you know, we, you folks passed a resolution in February allowing the use of vote centers. That means anybody can go anywhere to any location to vote. So another, in Swiftell Center in April elections honestly was not highly used, and I've had some preliminary discussions about finding a different location other than the Swiftell Center. Very preliminary discussions, I think, for the primary election here in a month. We use the Swiftell and see, see what turnout is there. I'm not against looking at something else for that. But keep in mind too, a little bit different than the April election with vote centers, you could have anybody in a county that comes to Brookings on election day, whether it be to work, or to shop, or whatever reason they have for coming to town, decide that they're just going to vote here in town. That could put a lot of pressure on two locations if you have one location that people are going to not even consider using if it's not something that they can get to easily. You know, I know, I know what the students have asked this often. We had, when we were, had precincts, we did have the location at Tompkins Alumni Center that was on the edge of campus. Of course, when you had precincts, you had to be registered in that precinct to use that location too. So with vote centers, it's a little bit different because anybody can go anywhere. I don't know, I guess if you have any other questions for me. The other thing is, you know, I know what the, the students are asking. I have to look out for all seventeen thousand registered voters in the county of Brookings too, so that's where I'm coming from. And for primary and general elections, we have six weeks when people can come to my office and vote early. If getting to a location on election day isn't convenient, you have six weeks to come to my office and vote, and anyone can do that now for any reason. So if you have any questions of me, you can sure ask.
Did you have any questions for her?
Not necessarily. I have a quick look at the bullet points there. I have no problem guaranteeing most of those bullet points there. I don't think we would even consider having a charge for it. Handicap accessible is not an issue. The entire campus is ADA compliant, is my understanding. I think that we can easily find a location that we can compromise on. Obviously, our preference wouldn't have, have it be in the center of campus. That's the, where the, most of the students are high traffic, where the most traffic is, but I'm certain we can agree on a location that would be less central but still easy to advertise to students and faculty.
Tony? Yes, Tom?
I saw President Cheekwin, and even though he has no authority over the Alumni Center, he offered it up again. And why did it leave there, Stacy? The Alumni Center?
The Alumni Center is very small. When you are talking of vote center, and we went from having eight precincts in town down to three locations to serve, you know, probably ten thousand plus people, that Alumni Center, the parking is not good over there at all for people. It's on campus again, where people see that location and they don't see anything on campus, kind of scares the average person off. And really, the Alumni Center with a vote center location, if you want a, a large number of people, that space just is small inside the Alumni Center. And parking is not good.
Too bad there's not more public facilities right on Sixth Street if your Swiftell Center didn't work very good. Is there a room, and I'm not saying they'd be interested, but the city fire hall there on Twentieth and Sixth Street, has that ever been looked at?
No, that hasn't, but that could be considered.
And that's close to campus.
Yeah.
And would pick up maybe some of your workers on the east end of town. I'm surprised they didn't use, there's seventeen hundred employees, I've been told over and over again, east of that interstate. Funny, they didn't use the Swiftell more.
And that's what we were looking at when we put something at the Swiftell Center was, to give those people on the east side of town an option to go to. And it might, we can check it out in June, with people coming in from Aurora and Elfton and the white areas, maybe that's the location that they would want to stop at if they're coming to town anyway. They can swing in there and vote, so it may pick up some people that way too, with the vote center concept, where anybody can vote anywhere.
The Alumni Center's going to be torn down anyway, but there'll be a new, bigger one built.
Okay.
And obviously, if you started to use. And obviously, if you started to use it, you'd want the building to go on in an odd year, not an even year, but that'd be a fifty-fifty chance, 'cause it hasn't been decided yet. But I guess, besides the students, we're great, you know, how many you got? About twelve thousand students, probably four thousand live on campus, eight thousand commute-
That's correct.
Every once in a while. So, the outer edge is appropriate for them.
Absolutely.
The under, freshmen, sophomores, it doesn't help too much, but I guess I'm not interested in why we go onto the vote centers and invested the money and spending more money and adding additional ones. But if we can get rid of a dead horse and put it in a live spot, I, and, and the number of employees at SDSU is astronomical, and so, huge number, so if we can get convenient for them, but maybe they're stopping on their way to work. And same with students that live off campus, they can stop, but I think once they find out they can vote in a lot of other places, like right near downtown, you know, on the way to Happy Hour, and not that they're all interested in Happy Hour, but it's very conveniently located and for shopping or whatever. So, maybe an education process, but maybe we can talk to the city and that be fairly close to campus and would take care of some of our other citizens' needs.
Right?
I guess that my thought was another potential, and mentioned it before, is the, you know, Performing Arts Center there, the PAC. You know, that there, I guess the question is, do you, do we have that guaranteed access to it because of use?
That would be my one concern with the Performing Arts Center. I think it's a great location, they have a great space.
Right.
Being available for my use.
Yeah.
If, you know, like I said, if they had an event that scheduled itself on election day and they could, you know, they're in the money-making business, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get the boot if they have a big event come in. And you can't blame them for that, but that would be my concern.
And that's where maybe the situation, we have to have the dialogue with the PAC and SDSU, and SDSU has some, if they have any type of ability to say, hey, you can't, no matter what, have this. Because I guess I look at the location for the county people to get to that location from the Highway fourteen bypass and from Twenty-Second Avenue, and the parking is, I think, pretty much free there. And so, there's, you know, people can come in from both, from the north and from the east and get good access to it. It's got a big, open area there where you can have it going, and it's still, you know, it's on the edge, be walking distance. You know, people on the far, far west would have quite a ways to go, but they, they could drive, you know, through there and get there and have free parking. And, and I, it'd be something I think we can consider if there's a way that SDSU, the PAC, and us could come to an agreement that is in writing and solid, that it can be used. You know, that might be an option there for everybody to get to, especially for the access to the county residents, too.
Danny?
I think Tom came up with an excellent idea. I, I just recently was out to the fire station out there, and they have a great, big, huge meeting room in there, and I think that's something that should be explored as an option to the Swiftell Center, and I think the intent of the request on campus is for people to be able to walk to it. It's ever be in the center of campus and everybody could just vote and walk to it. Well, sometimes, you know, you gotta look at how it meets everybody's needs, and I, I think we can't have vote centers all over the place, otherwise we start fragmenting ourselves and defeats the purpose of having them. But, but I think that fire station would be close enough to campus. I mean, if it's, if, if you have to drive over there, there's, there's plenty of parking around there. I think we should visit with the city, and, and I, and I think, you know, the PAC, Performing Arts Center up there would be a, an, you know, as far as a location, probably would even be better with more parking and everything. But I, I do think, you know, if they have an opportunity to get some entertainer in on a certain day, I don't, I think there's a lot of, it isn't just one group that is involved in that, there's so many, and I think getting that commitment would be really difficult, and there would be something come up, and I, I just don't want us to start. Once we get these centers in place, I just assume everybody knows where they're at and not keep bouncing them around and moving them, so.
Do you think we'll have an issue with the fire? I mean, what happens if there's an emergency with a fire going on? Do they use that meeting room? Do they say, okay, you gotta be out of here, we gotta move, you know, that type of thing? Obviously, it's, it's what ifs, and I'm not a big fan of saying what ifs all the time, but I guess if the fire goes on, are they gonna say, you're out of here, we got a, you know, emergency to handle, you guys gotta get out?
I, I think they use that for training, and they use that for, you know, they don't, they, when they dispatch, the trucks leave there and they don't come back to that location for use.
Bob?
Yeah, the, the training room is totally separate from the main fire hall. They've got a door, there's got, you gotta have a key locked just to access the fire department portion. We was in there last night and, and used it for storm training. So, it's a standalone facility itself, the training area.
Well, I guess the city and the chief will, you won't be at that meeting tomorrow, I guess, but they'd be the best one to ask. I mean, they'll know their logistics. I was thinking that some of my former students work for Arrowmark, and they save about four, they feed four thousand to five thousand people per day in the student-
Easily.
And not that, I'm looking to spend more money, but I was wondering if the university at some point would be willing to underwrite the cost of having that vote center there. And there you are, center of the campus, right by the students, but right now, I'm not looking to add another location, and, but if, you know, if we gotta have one paid for, Stacy, would that be a problem?
The problem is finding workers.
Oh, yeah.
I struggled, I struggled for, I struggled in June, and we eliminated, like I said, we went from eight precincts down to three in town, and I struggled to find people. And a lot of it is the changeover to e-poll books and vote centers. So.
Well, that would come with the obligation if, you know, we're renting the machines, right? So.
Correct, we're renting-
So, we could, if they gave us the money to rent the machine and found the bodies and, you know, and then they just back out on, not you, the students, I'm talking the university, then we don't rent the machines again, and we try another location. But I'm just throwing out that, I'm not, somebody wants to underwrite it, have another place, but we'll stick with the three that we want.
Stephanie?
I am not interested in adding an additional polling place, however, if we move Swiftell, I too believe that the fire station is an excellent place to go, if we can get that cleared with the city and the fire chief. And we have put it close to campus. I mean, we, we've made concessions so people can vote any place they want to vote, and I think to put it that close is about as good as we're gonna get right now, and I, I am not in favor of adding an additional place. This is moving the one at Swiftell and putting it close so that the faculty and the students can walk, they can walk to the fire station. That's right beside two of the fraternities, or a fraternity and a sorority. So, I think it's, it's moving it closer and more convenient for the campus, and I, I hope that that will be sufficient, but I am not in favor of adding an additional one at all.
I guess I was just gonna add on. I think both the Performing Arts Center and the fire station are excellent candidates, and I believe the students would be really happy with seeing a location moved. I'm the one in discussion has been Swiftell to the fire station or performing arts center. I think that'd be a fantastic idea, and we'd be really excited about that. As far as for what you were discussing with the university paying for one in the future long-term, I can't really speak for them, but it's a conversation I'd be willing to have, and I think that's something that the Students Association might also be interested in helping with in the future. I think that's a conversation worth having. But yes, I believe the fire station would be an excellent compromise.
Commissioner Falk?
And I, I think we do have to remember that the students that are here, they have to register here to be able to vote here, and a lot of them may choose to stay registered where they at, so they can vote for their own vocal candidates, whether it be, you know, out in peer or locally. So, I think, you know, what percent, I, I don't know what the percentage of the ones that would be registered anyway, so just because we have four thousand on campus, maybe a third of them, or maybe a quarter of them are actually registered in Brookings County that wanna vote here, so. I mean, so it's, it's all, you know, it isn't like we're losing those people. So, I think, but I think the fire station, the two, is a good compromise right now.
It's really hard to say how many really actually change over their registration. A lot of people I know do, a lot of people I know don't. I really couldn't even poke in the dark to guess, but there's a significant amount who do.
Of course, you gotta remember, it's a lot of people work there, but they drive by a voting center already, so we're maybe okay there. But I think we'll look and do it, and we'll just get back to you, or do we get back to...
If you would just maintain communications with Olivia, she's the one who's been kind of heading this up, and we keep her communicating with the city council and the county commission and those bodies. And I really appreciate your guys' time in putting this on the agenda and discussing it with us.
Well, I think we, you know, we're always open to suggestions, and, and Perry, you were there, we, we talked briefly about this at Government Affairs the other day. And the one thing we wanna establish with the vote centers is not completely, always changing them, so people get a pattern, they know that this is a place I can go vote. And the other thing is, once in that discussion, we just, you know, there's a lot of things the government has to, has to do, like the items that, that Stacy pointed out, that we have to make it accessible and convenient for all the people. We can't, we can't zero in on just the students, it has to be accessible to anybody else that's eligible to vote to get there, so. I think our goal is, as we, as we kind of break the new ground with the vote centers, is to, yes, try and find the, the traffic patterns, and I think I mentioned at the Government Affairs meeting is, you know, you, you do a major development, but don't put the sidewalks in for a couple of years, and pretty soon you'll just find where the paths are, and that's where you put the sidewalk, 'cause that's where people will go. That's a little bit what we're trying to seek out right now, and we understand the student population, and we wanna accommodate them as well as the rest of the citizens. And so, we're open to discussion, but I think we're probably a little premature right now to designating a place until we have some suggestions, negotiations with city, fire department, and things like that, but maintain contact with you and, and try and work it out so that we, we accommodate the student population and the, the employee population at the university along with everybody else, so.
Yeah, again, we, I just really appreciate you guys' time in working on this with us and engaging these communications, and I really think the decision, the recent decision to move towards the voting centers instead of going by districts, I guess, I think that's a really good move that's gonna help in the long run, too, when those get more established.
Mm-hmm, okay. Any other questions? Well, thanks for coming, and we'll ma, we'll maintain contact with you and communicate back and forth, and as we get, as we evolve through this whole thing, we want to end up having what we would call permanent locations where people know where they can easily go to vote.
Excellent.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
I had a final at seven this morning, and I actually got done about ten minutes before I had to be here, so.
Okay, moving on. Item number B is action to approve agreement fourteen thirty-eight with Sioux Valley Energy to occupy one hundred and ninety-seventh street. Chair would entertain a motion.
So, moved.
Moved by Falcon, second by Krogman. Discussion. Mr. Burke, you got any comment? Okay, please call the roll.
Miller?
Hi.
Falcon?
Hi.
Wyeth?
Hi.
Krogman?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Action, item number C is to approve agreement fourteen thirty-nine, once again with Sioux Valley Energy to occupy two hundred and nineteenth street. Chair would entertain a motion.
So, moved.
Moved by Krogman, second by Miller. Discussion. Dick, we're okay? Okay, please call the roll.
Falcon?
Hi.
Wyeth?
Hi.
Krogman?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item number D is action to approve agreement fourteen forty, once again with Sioux Valley Energy to occupy one hundred and ninety-seventh street, be a different location for electrical distribution. Chair would entertain a motion. Moved by Wyeth, second by Krogman. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Wyeth?
Hi.
Krogman?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Falcon?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
E, item E is action to approve agreement fourteen forty-one with Sioux Valley Energy for the occupation of two hundred and nineteenth street for electrical distribution.
So, moved.
Moved by Falcon, second by Miller. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Krogman?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Falcon?
Hi.
Wyeth?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item number F is agreement fourteen forty-two, and this is with the State Department of Health and the Brookings County for the fiscal twenty fifteen WIC services. Chair would entertain a motion.
So, moved.
Moved by Miller, second by Wyeth. Any discussion?
Does anybody have any questions on the staff report I provided? It's an annual agreement that, as you saw in the staff report, it did go up a little bit from what we received in previous years, about six thousand dollars. Their fiscal year runs off of ours, so it's never exactly correct, but the county has already been paying a portion of the wages and salaries for the last four or five years, six years now, actually.
I'm a strong advocate of the WIC program. It's been a outstanding program.
So, we'll just put this into, this number into our budget?
What I do is I take the revenue figure from this, and then I have to divide it out by what's remaining for the next year, and then we kinda guess what the increase will be in July of two thousand fifteen for the two thousand fifteen budget. So, it still has to be an estimate, 'cause we, the state determines what they're reimbursing us, it's not our estimate.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Please call the roll.
Miller?
Hi.
Falcon?
Hi.
Wyeth?
Hi.
Krogman?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item number ten on the agenda today is our deputy state's attorney's report. Abby, do you have some?
Just a couple of things. I just wanted to thank you all for letting Clyde and I attend the annual State's Attorneys' Conference in Deadwood two weeks ago. Had about a hundred state's attorneys and deputies throughout the state show up. They also have some assistant attorney generals, the attorney general was there, the U.S. Attorney. Just a really great turnout. Had some wonderful speakers from across the country, some great topics. Clyde and I found it very beneficial, good networking opportunity for me, so I really appreciate that, getting to know some of the other state's attorneys around the state. And then the only other comments I would have is, last night was the annual police department banquet and fundraiser, and this morning was the optimist law enforcement breakfast, both of which Clyde and I attended, and I'm sure Dennis will reiterate this as well, but we just have such outstanding law enforcement in this county, in this city, all of the entities that we work with, we have, they make our lives that much easier, our work that much easier in our office, and I think our, our county and our city is lucky to have all the outstanding officers that we have. So, I don't think that can be repeated enough, and I'm sure that's in large part to bosses like Marty and like Chief Miller and, and the like, so just my thanks to all of them.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Abby? Not, thanks. Move on to Stephanie and the commission assistant report. We, we have your staff report. Do you have some clarifications or anything else that you'd like to give us?
Can I, can I discuss a few items that I listed on there?
Pardon?
Can I discuss a few items that I listed on there?
Sure, yes, that's why we're here.
I won't go through my schedule and that kind of thing, but first of all, I did send out the notification to the Spring Social today. That went out yesterday, the public notice, so if the board is done and wants to attend that, that's been done. There are now mailboxes in the ante, ante room, so on board meeting days, I'll bring whatever you have left downstairs up here, so I'm not cluttering your desk, I just wanted to make you aware, but I think, Don, you have something in there. I got a request from the grant, that one of the Novita grants, the first one that we got for the governor's office of economic development. As you know, I already had to do a first quarterly report, it's time to do the second quarterly report. I will go ahead and submit that, it's due May fifteenth. It's gonna be similar to what I said last time, that we have not received a notice to proceed, so at this point, the project's on hold, but I do have to submit that as part of the grant agreement requirements. I, I guess this is just a comment, when, when the polling place location came up, another suggestion that I gave to Stacy, I don't know if it's something you wanna talk about if the fire department doesn't pan out, but also the research center, SDSU Research Park, lots of parking on the edge of town, close to campus, and it wouldn't be, have the problem with events like you do at the PAC Center, so just something to keep in mind. After our strategic planning session last week, I did visit with Dick and just confirmed that, yes, the plans still include Gary being in there, and I did confirm that with Gary yet again, so he knows he's going to the highway department, so I reassured him about that, just to let you know. I did provide you with a, just a summary list from the last Tuesday's meeting with department heads on what kind of their statements that were made and some of the items I heard the board discussing that you should consider doing in the future. There obviously may be things I left off, I just tried to give you something to go back to so that you'd have something for the meeting today. As far as budget, all this looking into statutes about obligations and financial obligations so that we could give that information to the 4H, so that they kind of knew what the guidelines were for the county. I came across the state law that actually states, you know, as far as it comes to budgeting, it's the board's obligation to do the budget, it's not the auditor's office, it is a board function. The only thing the auditor's office has to do is they have to provide you with a report by, I believe, May 15th that shows all of the expenditures and revenues for the previous year. So the auditor, so Vicki would be providing that to, to the board and then you look at that as you're formulating your budget request. The next part is that the county commission is responsible for giving to the, to the auditor between July 15th and July 30th, the provisional budget. We've never done that till probably mid, mid, beginning, bit, beginning to mid-August, so we need to step everything up about a month to be compliant with statute. So I've listed some dates here for the board to consider for budget hearings. Basically what it's going to do is in our office, you know, we combine all that information that comes in from non-manded requests as, as well as departmental, and I kind of do an analysis for the board and kind of put stuff together. It's going to put us on like a two-week timeframe instead of three to four weeks, so we'll be going a lot faster in our office, but this, I think, will allow us to get it done within that timeframe to give it back to the auditor by July 15th. So I've listed some dates there and I just need the board to set aside time that will work for you. It's easiest for me to coordinate when you're all looking at your schedules and you can determine what works for you. I just wrote down some potential dates, I, I believe that June 17th, I gotta look at my calendar. Is a county commission meeting, so I didn't know if maybe you wanted to start in the afternoon and then go a full day the next day, because typically it's a day and a half to get through non-mandated, it's in all the departmental appointments and the review of revenue and that kind of thing. So if we did a half-day on the 17th and a full day on the 18th, then we could do, you know, whatever is needed on the 24th, and that would still give you two additional sessions to schedule if needed. But I need to hear from you what's going to work, I, I avoided the NACO timeframe, so I don't, you know, but I don't know your guys' obvious schedules, so. I do need to get something committed so I can get these kind of timelines out to department heads and also so I know what I'm going to be working with and trying to compile the information to present to the board.
Okay.
Are you going to survey monkey us or?
No, let's talk about it right now.
I just want to get it set now because even.
I'm not here July, not even the state.
Well, let's talk about the June 17th and 18th.
What about June 17th and 18th? I think if I could really have everyone commit to June 17th and 18th, and then we could do the 24th and then if needed, July 1st, I don't even think you'll need July 8th. We just need two full good days and a half day. You know, you need that day and a half and then begin in to review and then to get the discussion back from the board, and then I need a follow-up date with everybody.
So you're looking at June 17?
17 and 18.
Does the 17th and 18th work for everyone? That is unbelievable.
Oh, I just soon.
Who's out?
I just soon I'd do the afternoon of the 18th.
Oh.
Why?
Sorry, Danny. He, he was squirming over there too.
What about till, what would be the, like, into the afternoon till two or three? Do you have to be done by a certain time?
I've worked at half two.
There's no have to, if everybody else can be here, I can be here.
We can be here.
It's not, it's not a big deal.
Not a big deal.
Well, we still have the 24th.
Well, but I need a day and a half for department heads in review to be, initially to begin, and it works well when we do those right in a row, just because I can schedule appointments, department heads, you know, the departmental budgets take a day. You know, it's a half hour per meeting, you saw the strategic planning session, how long, you know, we went till two.
Well, the problem always gets to be you don't know when you're, when you're done on the, on that 17th, I mean, we could have a short meeting, be able to start and almost put a whole day in there too, and I mean, that's always what happens, you, pretty soon you can start at 11 o'clock and.
And typically what I do is on the 17th, I know we're done by noon, so I schedule appointments in the afternoon, but if we get done early on the 17th, we can do some other review items and be done earlier on the 18th. So I can schedule appointments for the afternoon of the 17th and the morning of the 18th with departments.
And set a target to be done by 2 o'clock on the 18th.
We can try, yeah.
Sounds good.
17 and 18, is that what it is?
17th and 18th, and then obviously I think you should also just keep the 24th on your calendar as well, that's a Tuesday, at least in the morning. In case you, you're going to need to come back and review everything because you're going to request that we go and make changes and you're going to have to see how that impact, impacts the overall.
So mark the 24th as well.
Yeah, and then maybe just hold on the afternoon of the 1st if we need to finalize anything after the meeting on the 1st. And that would be like a two-hour, you know, if, if we have those first dates, I, I don't think you would need a lot of time on July 1st.
Start on the 8th, at 8 o'clock in the morning on Wednesday morning?
Well, on the 18th, let's go 9, or do you want to do 8:30? Well, if you guys want to get done earlier, we'll, can we do 8:30 because I can't guarantee I can get in here right at 8 all the time, so.
On the 18th.
And I'll send you guys calendar appointments on this too.
So on 24th, that'd be 8:30 also?
Yeah, yep, yep, yep. And then maybe we'll just say on July 1st, just after the meeting for any final review.
Okay.
Perfect.
That works for everybody?
Then you won't need, I don't think you'll need July 8th then.
Boy, you can't believe you hit a home run there.
That never happened, I'm, yay, wonderful.
Everybody can be here.
The next question, since this comes up every year, so I'm just gonna put this out there too. It has been in the past that the board has not scheduled individual appointments with any discretionary, discretionary form, funding requests. Now, you do meet with 4H and Community Health, but I'm talking more about the Boys and Girls Club and those kind of things. But then every year during budget, somebody brings up, are we going to invite these guys in to talk to us? So I'd like to know from the beginning how the board wants to proceed, if you want me to schedule appointments with, with each of those discretionary funding requests? Or if you would rather continue as, as we have in the past where only if the board has a specific question or?
Well, in the past, years ago, we, we had everyone come in and appear before us and, and it seemed like we went on and on and on. And now we've got, everybody provides us their packet, they've got all the material, and we all review them, and if we got a question, we can contact one of that agency's board members or whatever, get answers to questions, you know. And the process just seems to work a little smoother and, and faster for all.
Right, the only thing is with 4H.
Well, that's my next, that's a whole nother question I got next.
Okay, I'll wait.
I'm talking about all of them except for 4H or Community Health. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Okay, my next question is with community, well, actually, Community Health, you guys typically have them come in at a department head's scheduled time and you do with 4H. My question is that in, in the past, 4H has completed both a departmental request and then a non-mandated request, so they went through the application, you know, where they put what their goals are and what they're going to use the funding for and stuff like that. Community Health is a little bit different because the only thing we budget for them is their wages of their employees, so there's really kind of no discussion in there, it's, they may have $500 worth of supplies, but really, there's nothing else tied, tied to that budget. So as far as I'm concerned, I think that stays the same. 4H is different because, you know, you've had this ongoing discussion about running them through as a county department, which we are this year. So does the board want them to continue to submit two funding applications, filling out the departmental requests like everybody else, or the non-mandated discretionary requests, which is the application status with the, their budgets, you know, what their priority goals are, all that stuff attached? Which way do you want them to go?
Since we have an employee, because we're basically, we're paying part of Sonia's, you know, there, so, I mean, it's part of a departmental type of situation, and that's where I'm differentiating between 4H and the other Boys and Girls Club in there, because we don't employ any of them and they come up and they do that, and that's great, it's a non-mandated thing. But yet we also go over and above just the employee portion of it and provide for programming and whatever they decide they want to use with it. So I, I think it's, there's got to be a departmental part of it if we're paying part of an employee, and I'm, am I wrong on that? That we have to have for, for a portion of that, that we shouldn't have that in the departmental type of thing as long as we're paying?
This is a difficult question to answer. Here, here's the bottom line, you guys can invite whoever you want into a hearing, 4H has always come in for a hearing regardless of what application they're filling out. What I'm wanting to answer more for them is there's a lot more steps involved for them completing the non-mandated application. They have to provide you a written statement of what the goals are, what their funding's going to be used for, their audited financial statements, that kind of stuff, which we don't get from department heads because all of their funding for departments is purely county. Where 4H is different because they have also some off-site, other non-county fund accounts or checking accounts and things like that. They don't have any checking accounts anymore, yeah, so.
So it can be departmental.
It's just up to you guys and what you want to see as a board, I just don't want to make an assumption because this is a.
Well, I, I just think, you know, that we're, last year, what, we put in 100, 100,000 for programming there, I'd like, I guess, I'd like to see what they're using it for, what they decided to do with it, you know? Because if they come back and ask us for more, that's going to be a question we have going, well, what'd you do with the first one, did you add extra people to help, did you add?
It is a line-by-line in the departmental.
Right now, it's a departmental budget.
It is, it is line-by-line.
Yeah, we changed that.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so my, and here's another alternative, maybe, maybe because we are treating, treating it as a departmental budget this year, if that's your intention to do in 2015 too, then just have them complete that departmental worksheet. You can still ask those specific questions and give it to the 4H either agent or the board ahead of time and have them come in and address those questions during their hearing. But I just don't want to make them go through the paperwork of.
With Humerson, to do both.
Doing both, if that's not what the board wants, but if that's what you want, that's totally fine too, that's your prerogative, but I, I just want to make sure I'm getting what the board is expecting to see. Does that make sense?
You know, maybe we might know more after the, this afternoon, I see May 15th, you want to know, right? Which way we're going?
Well, department heads are, have already been giving their budget planning sheets, and non-mandated funding have already been given their applications too. All of those are due back to us by the end of May so that I can get the budget books put together before June. So if you're going to require both from extension or from 4H, I would just like to let them know so that they're getting that done in a manner where they're not going to be able to, you know, where they can still meet our deadlines.
And maybe after.
Maybe after strategic planning, like you said, you'll know, I just want to make sure I have something to report back to them.
Well, I, I feel as long as we're doing a line-by-line with them, that, I mean, when someone else comes in, non-mandated libraries or whatever, they want X amount of dollars, they explain their programs, what they're going to use, use that money, but it's not specific line-by-line for us to say our money is going to this or this. But I think this, in this particular case, they should come in because we, if we're going to put money, extra money in the line, we want to know what has been done and what they're going to do with it. So I think even though it's considered a non-mandated, it still is a line-by-line budget, and I think that we need to have them come in for that.
I've had enough for, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, so departmental.
Enough 4H means, you think I know this, and maybe I didn't, I've already forgot amongst everything, is, do we hire Sonia and can we fire Sonia?
No, she's a state employee.
How in the heck is she our employee?
She's not our employee. She's not our employee.
And it says in state law, we kick in, so she isn't our employee.
No, the only person out there who's our employee would be Susan Vanderwell, the part-time assistant.
And the part-time employee on that budget sheet.
Yeah, Sonia's not our employee, she's a state employee, we pay a portion, we pay to the state, the equivalent of about 50% of the salary.
None of it is through the county.
Yeah, so, so it's just the running of the organization and, well, I'm going back to what Ryan started out with the conversation, he had me going in a certain direction now. What was your thought again, Ryan?
Departmental budget.
Yeah, I guess that's fine, just do that. Yeah, I, I just, it's all of our funding basically goes to them and, you know, that's, we're the main fund person, they don't go out and fundraise from other entities, not like Boys and Girls Club and all that kind of stuff, we're the one, so I just.
My opinion would be as long as the county continues to run their expenses through county system, accounts payable, accounts receivable, just like we do for every other department, then they should just do the departmental request. You can still require additional information from them, but I don't want to make them go through the hoops of filling out two different kinds of forms and us putting them in two different kinds of books and kind of confusing the issue.
Right, right.
You can still get all the information you want, this is more of an administrative decision, decision and discussion than something that, it's not going to make a big change to what you guys see, it's more of, what am I going to make them go through, how many hoops do they have to jump through?
Simplify it, is what you're trying to do.
Yeah, exactly.
Departmental, is that the idea of everybody? Okay. Stephanie, I, I couldn't hear everything you said, you said they don't, something about their checking account or?
Yeah, the, you know, the ones that they've always had, like that horse account and those, those, those no, are no longer under Sonia at all. They're under a different EIN number with the Leaders Association and the state watches over those. So that isn't going to be an issue for us anymore.
Well, yeah, state audits them, yeah. So how is, how is their funds distributed out of them if someone wants money, where do they get it?
The Leaders, apparently, it's under their EIN. It's not under anything that we deal with.
The Leaders Association.
So that will show when they bring their financial to us?
No, because we, we don't oversee anything with the Leaders Association.
No, I, I understand that, I understand that, we just, okay, I'm just, it's, money's available for the 4H program if necessary, I'm assuming.
I don't know, I, you know, I, I don't, I guess, like in that 4H or the horse account, I think they were, it's specified for certain things.
That's an endowment, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
See, that's where I'm confused, is how they could put it all into one account if.
It isn't, it's broken down, it's just, it's under the Leaders.
All those accounts were moved to.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so then if they, if the 4H, and when they have their feed for achievement days, if there's profit made from that, that goes to that checking account in the Leaders group?
I, I don't know, I can't answer that, I, I don't know.
I think you can still ask those kinds of questions during your budget hearing time slot, and maybe even prior to that appointment time, if the board could come up with some specific questions that you might have about the budget, I could give that to them ahead of time, so they could be prepared to answer them when they come in for their session.
Well, I'm more comfortable with that because before, we were giving money and not knowing what other monies they had to run the same programs, now it's in a different group, and if they need it, they can go over to that group and it isn't, it isn't under the 4H or Sonia's control or that has a checkbook type of thing in.
That's all I have, if, I know that Rob is with the Achievement Center, is already in town, they were meeting up at SDSU today, actually with Peter Nielsen. But I can try and reach them if you guys would like to start earlier than 1, otherwise, he's planning on being here at 1. I do have the room next door set up and we have that room until this evening, whenever we need. There is a meeting that starts in here, I believe, at 6:30, right, Bob? But we can, I, if we want to steal chairs from the executive session room, we can do that after this meeting today too, that's all I have. I can tell you what we've been doing, but it's all on this book, so if you want to come read it, you can.
Yep, okay, thanks, Stephanie. Commissioner Wyeth?
Commissioner reports?
Yes.
Okay, you know, I forgot, I just realized, I forgot to mention, East Brookings Behavioral Health is now in every school in, in the county, so. And as far as other meetings, well, I guess, just the one with the department heads. I, the thing that I have down is now that we got the letter going out to East Brookings and 34th and Ryan and I, and I thought, I just kind of thought we should include Dick in the subcommittee and Stephanie. What we're talking about is we'll probably have to have a survey monkey to figure out when the heck everybody, um, East, one individual at least from East Brookings. Sioux Valley, BMU, who I've contacted and they're interested. And then Banner, of course, we're, you know, the meter's going to start running, we start dragging around all these different meetings, and just want to make sure the commission's finding that we're running up the tab on whatever number of meetings takes, so I don't know, Ryan, have you thought about?
And Tom, who are the two commissioners on the subcommittee?
Krogman and Wyeth. And another.
Krogman and Wyeth. And another, you could communicate, I don't know if he, if it would be in, in attendance or not, but it would be all right to be, communicate with BDC, Al Hutton, Ryan, just-
Does that sound good to you, Ryan?
You know.
Anybody else, Ryan, that you've thought about should be there or?
Would anybody from the townships out that way? They really wouldn't have reason to, but they, I don't know if it'd be important on this project, but it's-
I can give Stephanie, um, the Sioux Valley contacts and they can invite whoever. And then I started with Steve Meyer at BMU and, um, let's see, I keep forgetting.
Is there any?
Paul Melby, yeah. I'm sure Paul Melby would be the one, maybe both of them, I guess, will be there. These leaders don't like to get too far from the engineers and I'm also one of those. And I like to have my engineer so I know what they're talking about.
Is there any from, anybody from the city attending that or?
Well-
Did I miss that?
They might be interested because they got a little stretch to finish themselves and anything with electrical might affect them.
Jeff has asked at times for updates on what's going on and I-
Just from a communication standpoint, I think it'd be good to have a city representative.
I would include them also. And then, of course, Banner and Al Hutton, city, so. Though I have a hundred people there, but get going, see what they come up with.
That would be your, kind of your potential stakeholders in the whole thing. I mean, people that are affected and. Okay?
We want to get started. I like Wednesday afternoons, but-
That's up to you guys. Okay, is that it, Tom?
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Ryan?
All right, uh, had a hospital, had a hospital board meeting on twenty-eighth. Couple of things there. They did a disaster activity there of active shooter on campus where they planned that out. I'm trying to think what day that was. Do you remember Bob, what day that was?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday, I think, yeah. It was, yeah, it was. It was the next day they had it. And there was a strategy there to where something happened, you know, anywhere, I guess they used the campus, that there was an overflow of people that needed treatment and, and they overflowed the emergency room, basically. And how they would handle that, how they would do that and stuff. So that was a very good exercise, sounded like it went well. And, and so that was important, too, and I, it sounds like they're in contact with you because I asked a question at the meeting and stuff about which part of it is part of our, you know, disaster plans and stuff like that, so. Also had discussion, the South Dakota State Employee Benefits Program is kind of changing. Sounds like they're twenty-five million in the hole. And so their person that was there relieved them of their duties and hired somebody else, but they came up with a plan. Tier, tier-one plan and it basically pushes all the work to Sioux Falls. All the services, not all of them, I mean, the major stuff, like for example, you know, cardiac, orthopedic, ariatric, all that. If you can use somebody else, but you don't get the good rate, your deductible is less. So if you use one of the people, you're out of, well, the difference is out of pocket. It's five hundred dollar deductible. Use one of the, there and it's twenty-five hundred out of pocket. If you use somebody else, and Brookings Hospital's not, it's five thousand out of pocket. So it's twenty-five hundred dollar difference to go have the procedure done in Sioux Falls. At one of the, and all, the only ones that can do the stuff are in Sioux Falls. So, you know, Jason was not real happy about that, didn't have input on it. No, I shouldn't say didn't have input on it. There was supposed to be a tier-two and that tier-two never came to fruition, so it's just a tier-one. So now even if you have a state employee out in license, South Dakota, and they have one of these things that they need to, to do, they got to drive to Sioux Falls to get that or have it done in Rapid City, but you're out of pockets twice.
Oh, my gosh.
And so there's some discussion about that and we have, the thing about it is obviously our state employees with SDSU and there, we have twenty-five hundred state employees, right, in Brookings? And so there was a discussion that we had and Jason Murkew's going to do some questioning and some stuff to the state wondering what happened and why, but.
Were they self-insured or fully insured?
Excuse me?
Were they self-insured?
Shurled or fully? Oh, okay.
So they're in the hole, so they're trying to find ways-
Underinsured.
They're trying to find ways to, I think, trying to find ways to get back out of the hole. And part of this was negotiations with these hospitals to say, you're going to get an extra thirty of these procedures done every year because we're putting, bringing them to you, so you need to give us a better deal. So that's kind of what happened there and I, I'm not sure how, we, we've just got to make some noise a little bit and try to get back into there and see if we can also do that. But, you know, the basic, what Jason said is they can do it less expensive than we can. I mean, that's basically the, the gist of it. They're trying to cut dollars, but not convenience for the person. And, and he said, I can't, I can't do that price for that. And so they just do that many more that they can do it, so.
You know, Ryan, I just, they've been doing it, but it's really increased the orthopedic procedures that are being done at the hospital, which is-
Yeah. Our surgeries are definitely up and that's been a good thing. And that's what they've been trying to do is get the word out that you can request your surgery or procedure to be done at the Brookings Hospital, if they can do it. And they can do a lot of them now. They have surgeons that come in and do that. So they're trying to get that word out to all of, everybody, you know, in the community in the area that if you have something that can be done here and you see a physician from Vera or Sanford and they're, want to push you down to Sioux Falls, you can say, no, I'd like to have it here and they can have it done. But now with the state health plan, the situation is it's a cost to you as a consumer there, but you have to drive down now, so. But, you know, a lot of, I've been sitting on this board, a lot of things, a lot of things that go on when you have that type of organizations and, you know, just to the south of us, there's a lot of that stuff that goes on and it's a lot of times way over my head, so. But anyway, that's, that's all I have.
That's enough good news. Okay, Stephanie?
On April twenty-ninth, I attended the Brookings Fireman's Dinner, which was well-attended and good food. On May fifth, which was last night, we had our extension board meeting. And we worked on the budget, not knowing whether it was going to be departmental or, or non-mandated or both. But the bottom line is we came up with the figures that we needed. And the one question that they had, and I've already discussed this with Stephanie, is that they feel that especially if it's departmental, the thirty thousand that is going to Swiftail should be on that line-by-line budget and, um-
And we talked about that last year, moving it, but then the board looked at trying to do a flat funding. But after this year, you know, we department's not going to be out there anymore, so we could very easily transfer that utility expense and then the payment to the multiplex over to that budget. And I've got those figures, so I could just add it in when they submit their budget.
And that's all that I have.
Okay, Dennis?
On the twenty-third or twenty-fourth after our meeting that we had, I tried to appear to do interviews for our state YGI's group that, you know, putting that together and spent a couple of days out there, then the twenty-ninth I-
Twenty-ninth, I did attend the fire department after the workshop we had here on the twenty-ninth and I attended the fire department feed. It was only two events.
Okay. I had the, attended the Fireman's Feed in Brookings, very nice event, well-attended. Then we had the government affairs meeting and as I mentioned earlier, we, we talked about the polling places, the vote centers. Kind of made plans for next year's Brookings Day coming up and Larry Tiedemann gave us a kind of an update on what's going on in state legislature and things like that, so it was an interesting meeting. I did have a, and maybe, did you get a copy of the state association's appointment? The, the board directors appointed a catastrophic county poor relief advisory committee? Okay, I want to make that veil and I'll give the letter to Stephanie. And the committee is comprised of Sarah Peterson of Cottington County, their welfare director, Jerry Miller, Union County State's attorney, and Jennifer Guthmiller, McPherson County Auditor, Welfare Director, so. They're going to be the Poor Relief Advisory Committee. I would assume that the advisory committee is going to re, review and some of the major claims that might be coming in or something. I think that pretty well covers it. Anybody else have anything, any last thoughts that? If not, thank you all. We'll declare the meeting adjourned. We got a work session this afternoon.